Planning Commission to Order. Before we start with our agenda items, I'm going to ask our attorney, Mr. Mike Perry, if he would go through a couple of things that we have asking to clarify for us as members of the Board dealing with ex parte communication and the Sunshine Law. So, Mr. Perry, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning or good afternoon, planning Board members. What I have to share with you is for informational purposes. In keeping with my responsibilities, I would like to provide the Board with a brief presentation on three subjects which impact your ability to be effective Board members who are capable of performing their duties in accordance with the law. The first is the Sunshine Law. Please note that this is an actual law. The official acts of this Board have long been held to be subject to the Florida Government and Sunshine Law. In 1967, the Florida Legislature enacted the Government and Sunshine Law. This law can be found in Chapter 286.011 of the Florida Statutes. A copy of Florida's Government and the Sunshine Manual can be accessed at www.myflorida/legal.com/sun.nsf/sunmanual. This statute establishes a basic right of access of citizens to most meetings of Boards, Commissions, and other governing bodies of state and local government agencies or authorities. The Putnam County Planning Board, having been formed pursuant to the authority of the Putnam County Commission, is subject to the Government and the Sunshine Law, as is, of course, the Board of County Commissioners. The practical effect of this law on this Board is simple. All meetings must be properly noticed, open to the public, and any records generated by the Board are public records, which can be requested and inspected by the public. The Public Records Law was codified at Florida Statutes 119.01 in 1991. There are exemptions to the Sunshine Law and the Public Records Law, but I cannot think of any exemptions which would apply to this Board. As members of this Board, you must remember, what you must remember is that you cannot meet outside of a properly noticed and scheduled meeting. You must not discuss a matter pending before the Planning Board or that you know is to be brought before the Planning Board unless that discussion is taking place at a properly noticed and scheduled meeting. If this Board attempts to take any official action outside of a properly noticed and scheduled meeting, it is not, it will not be binding on anyone. The second issue I would like to mention involves ex parte communications. An ex parte communication is an oral or written communication which is made without proper notice to all parties and/or without the participation of all parties to this proceeding and is not on the public record. An ex parte communication is, in the most serious instance, an attempt to sway or influence a decision of this Board. Some ex parte communications may be designed or intended to solicit some indication as to how a Board member views a particular petition and be inclined to vote on that petition. The ex parte rule is designed to preserve the due process rights of all parties. I caution you to avoid contacting or receiving a communication from anyone who has filed a petition or has an interest in any matter before this Board. If you are contacted, immediately inform that person that you cannot speak to them. Even the most innocent conversation could result in your disqualification from discussing a matter with your fellow Board members and/or voting on the matter. You must make sure to maintain your impartiality. Every Board member must avoid even the appearance of impropriety. So we are clear, there can be no verbal or written communications with any interested party outside this meeting. Before anyone asks this, before anyone asks, this includes sign language, Morse code, or smoke signals. Just don't do it. Number three, and closely aligned with ex parte communications, and they often overlap, is conflict of interest issues. In the context of your service on this Board, a conflict of interest occurs when an individual's personal interests, whether family, friendship, financial, or social factors, could compromise his or her judgment, decisions, or actions. Being human, we often seek to help or be nice to someone. This is not the place for those sentiments. It is, however, for this Board to work together to fashion remedies that may help reach an equitable resolution. Not properly recognizing or dealing with a conflict of interest will undermine the integrity of this Board. You must be willing to ask yourself, number one, does your knowledge of the facts and circumstances surrounding a particular matter render you unable to consider that matter in a fair and impartial manner? Your knowledge about a particular matter must not be obtained through an ex parte communication. Does your relationship with an applicant render you unable to consider a particular matter in a fair and impartial manner? Would an applicant expect special treatment from you? If so, recuse yourself. Am I making, am I making a decision that benefits an applicant that is not justified? For, for instance, a conflict of interest would arise if you owned a piece of property adjacent to the applicant and your decision benefited your property in some way. As I'm sure you realize, the Sunshine Law and law against, the rule against ex parte communications and conflicts of interest are in many respects intertwined. Your effectiveness as a Board member will be defined by your ability to adhere to these relatively simple rules of impartiality. If you are ever about to take an action which you feel might violate the Sunshine Law, cause you receive an ex parte communication, or may present a conflict of interest, please notify me before doing anything. Does any of the Board members have any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Perry? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Appreciate you doing that. At this time, before I read the notice of the meeting, I will ask, and I will poll the members, were there any ex parte communications concerning these cases? Tom? Aaron? Jerry?
No communications, no.
Okay.
I own property across.
That's, that's the next one. We'll start down with Mr. Stanley. Joey?
No.
Chris?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll move to conflicts of interest. Does anyone have a conflict of interest or an apparent conflict of interest? Tom? Aaron? Jerry?
I own property across 207 from the proposed development there on the, whatever that, 160 acres.
Will that affect your ability to vote in an impartial manner?
No.
Chris?
No, ma'am.
Joey?
No.
Stanley? And I have had neither. Okay, we will move forward, and there's no reason for Mr. Hafer to be recused. Is that correct, Mr. Perry?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. Well, bear with me, I'm going to read you the statement about today's meeting. This is a public hearing, and we are the Putnam County Planning Commission. We are the designated local planning agency for the county as prescribed in Chapter 163 of the Florida Statutes, and we function under the authority of Articles 11 and 12 of the Putnam County Land Development Code. The primary responsibility of the Commission is to serve as an advisory body to hear and make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on matters related to provisions and proposed amendments to the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and the Putnam County Land Development Code. The members of this Board will review each application and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners at their regularly scheduled meeting on July 23rd, 2024. Procedurally, we will call each case by name and number. A member of staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will then take any comments from the applicant or the applicant's representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. Please direct all comments or statements to the Board and not to other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, to be recognized, come forward to the lectern, and identify his or herself by name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the Board. This motion will be voted on by the Board members and become our recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners will make the final determination regarding the application. All applicants have the right to withdraw their requests at any time during the application process. The following case, we have no cases that have been withdrawn. If the applicant chooses to have these cases heard at a later date, the case will be re-advertised. Our first case to be heard today is rezoning number 2400005. Jennifer?
Thank you for the record, Jennifer Gazell. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from Commercial Professional Office, CPO, to Residential 2 to allow for residential single-family residents to be built. The applicants are Gary and Robin Blake, so one acre parcel located at 1580 County Road 309 in Georgetown. The parcel identification number is 12-13-26-0650-0000-0011. The subject site is Zoned Commercial Professional Office and has a future land use designation of rural residential. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment for approximately one acre to allow for new construction of a single-family residence. The parcel is located at 1580 County Road 309 in Georgetown, has approximately 640 feet of road frontage on County Road 309, and is vacant. The parcel is described as part of Lot 1 of the J.C. Blanchard subdivision recorded in 1923. The majority of the J.C. Blanchard subdivisions south of County Road 309 was re-subdivided and developed as Driftwood Cove subdivision and recorded in Map Book 4, Page 65, on March 30th, 1961. The remainder became part of Lot 1. The parcel was rezoned from Residential Zoning District on April 24th, 1979, for a proposed real estate office. No development occurred. Should the requested rezon be approved, the parcel will be eligible for building permits to construct a single-family residence adhering to the regulations for the Residential 2 zoning district. Aerial view. Future land use. Zoning. Flood zone. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from Commercial Professional Office, CPO, to Residential 2 R2, as the proposed amendment is consistent with the adopted goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and is compatible with existing development in the area. Questions?
Two questions. Turn my microphone on.
Is the applicant or the agent of the applicant present? No one would like to speak? Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this particular application? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing portion of this meeting, bring it back to the Board. What is the Board's pleasure on this case?
I'll make a motion that we approve REZ 24-00005, as it is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a proper motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this case? Hearing none, let's call for the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All opposed, like sign. This case is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Our second case is PUD 2400003. This is an application by the King Family LLC. Ms. Gazell?
The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from Residential 1 R1A and Commercial Neighborhood C1 to plan unit development. The applicant is King's Family LLC. The agent is Donnie King. It's an 80.90 acre parcel located at 1160 County Road 309 in Crescent City. Parcel identification is 12-26-12-26-0000-0030-0010. The applicant is seeking approval for the purpose of establishing an overnight recreation park, consisting of up to 600 RV sites, no more than two caretaker residences, cabins, glamping sites, a camp store, restaurant, bathroom/bathing facilities, laundry facilities, RV boat storage, events, meeting facilities, park office, and outdoor recreation areas. The parcel is designated rural center and rural residential on the adopted future land use map. Parcel is currently vacant and has approximately 350 feet of road frontage on County Road 309 and 2,600 feet of paved road frontage on County Road 308. According to the Putnam County GIS reference map, there is approximately 18 acres of wetlands. The submitted site plan indicates a majority of those areas will be avoided. Should this PUD be approved, the applicant will then submit to the Development Review Committee to satisfy additional development requirements. The DRC will review plans to ensure the development is compliant with local, state, and federal development regulations. As it pertains to this property, the DRC will ensure the placement of RV lots is acceptable based on the development agreement, and the Florida Department of Health will review the plans for potable water and sanitary sewer. Other agencies, including but not limited to Putnam County Public Works, Emergency Services, and St. John's River Water Management District, will review plans to ensure the development will not adversely affect surrounding properties by complying with each agency's specific regulations associated with new development. Aerial view. Future land use. Zoning. Flood zone. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from Residential 1 R1A and Commercial Neighborhood C1 to planned unit development PUD, with staff proposed development agreement as the request is consistent with the requirements for PUD zoning, consistent with the future land use designation, and consistent with other comprehensive plan goals, objectives, and policies.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions? I have one. You know, you mentioned that the majority of the wetlands would be avoided. What about the ones that won't be avoided, and what will happen with them?
I would have to defer to the applicant on exactly what their plan is for their, for their development.
All right. Is the applicant present or the applicant's agent? I see Mr. Patrick Kennedy coming up. If you would just give us your name and address first, and we'll go over there.
Patrick Kennedy, 673 Third Avenue, Wallaca, Florida. I can jump straight to the answer to your first question. It's, right now, the plan, as you see it in the document, doesn't call for any wetland impacts other than something around, I think so, it's less than two tenths of an acre of isolated wetlands, and those would be, obviously, we go through development review and approval process, and we would mitigate as required by the Water Management District.
Okay.
And/or the county. But it's, you know, as I tell my clients, it's, if you can avoid the wetlands, it's good for everybody, including your pocketbook. So they're going to do their best to do that. But certainly, I believe any final development plan will come back before these folks. Is that right? Or no? The DRC?
The DRC.
Okay. Well, in any event, you know, we're going to do what your staff and the Water Management District require us to do.
Thank you.
In that regards, yeah. Don't know if you have any questions, so I don't want to try to repeat what the staff said. Obviously, we agree with the recommendation. The development agreement, as you see it in your packet, largely follows the overnight recreational park standards. So it's not anything unusual asking for other than we want to change the zoning to allow for the overnight recreational park. Your code requires that you do these by PUD, so that's why we took this avenue. Again, I don't know how far you want me to get into the current development plans. If there's any questions, I might want to rather take it that way. If you've had time to review this packet or...
We have had time to review it.
Yeah. So, again, RV, RV resort, primarily RV sites, and, you know, a mix of amenities to support the RV campground, and that's what we hope to do, and we hope you can approve it. I don't...
And will those amenities be in the first phase?
There will be some amenities in the first phase because you want, the functional amenities have to be in, be in place, the water and sewer, and I think we want to point out, we are going to, the current plan is to do a centralized sewer as your code requires. So it'll be onsite. This development's going to be fully self-contained. It's going to manage its water, wastewater, and stormwater onsite, as you guys and the Water Management District and the Health Department require. I'll say that if you look at the site plan itself, the amenities outside the infrastructure are all kind of centered in the middle of the property. We've listed the kind of things we want to do, but how they're going to get laid out is uncertain, but that's the location, is we want to have them centered so that they can be reached from all, kind of be as equidistant as you can make it from all areas of the development.
Is your client ready to begin once approval is given?
They've asked for a two-year start time.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, is it three years? Two or three?
Needs two.
Yeah, but in any event, and that's pretty quick for a project of this size, but they are ready to go once the approvals are in place.
Okay.
The longer they sit, you know, the less money they make, so they want to get it going.
Any questions of Mr. Kennedy? Any other questions?
I do, Captain Patrick. How are you?
Yes, I'm good.
And I may have missed it somewhere in here because it's a lot of information. 600 units, it says RV sites, but it doesn't, I didn't see anywhere the number of cabins or glamping. Is that included in the 600?
Yes.
It's 600 total.
Total of 600 units. That's 7.5 sites per acre is what it comes out to. Just a smidge under that, but that's, that's where they're going to sit as a 7.5 units per acre, as a maximum.
Yeah.
It could even come down depending how the, when they drill down on the engineering, and it might be worth it to reduce it by a couple if they avoid those wetlands, that kind of thing. But that will be the maximum.
Any other questions? Please stay around in case there are other questions that come up for you later.
Yep.
We thank you very much. Anything else you would like to add?
No, I guess just on the, on the density question, I guess if you look at your land development code and your, actually, your comp plan, it talks about up to 12 units per acre. So we're trying to stay well below that. We want to keep some open space, not, we don't want to jam everything up in there. So we want to have a nice, open feel to it as well. So that's why 7.5 is kind of the sweet spot.
You're going to retain a lot of the vegetation there, too.
That's the idea, yeah.
Mr. Kennedy, I have, Madam Chair, I have one more question. I noticed in here we have ability to have private, a private area, private-owned area?
Yes.
And I just want to be sure that I read that right, and that that is also limited to the same timeframe as the rest, as far as length of stay?
Right, yes.
Okay.
That's how it reads. It'd be, it can be individually owned, but the length of stay would be the same.
Okay. All right. All right.
That's all.
Anything else? Thank you, Patrick. All right. At this point, I will open it up for public comment. I do have one card that doesn't give me a case number on it. Marshall Rawson, are you here for this case? No, okay, then I will put that aside. Anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this case? Given that, I will bring it back to the board for discussion and action. It's back to us. The public portion of this meeting is now closed. Any concerns, issues?
I don't have any.
Anybody ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Mr. Ross.
I recommend that Board of County Commissions approve PUD 24-00003 as it is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. I'm going to take Chris's this time. We have a proper motion and a second. On the floor, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed, like sign? Thank you very much. This will now go on to the Board of County Commissioners for July 23, 2024, at their meeting. Good luck, and it's good use of land. Now, we move on to case number PUD 24-00004. Before we get into this case, I'm going to ask that members of the audience refrain from any conversation between yourselves or any conversation between you and who may be speaking at the present time. If you want to address the board, I need a blue speaker card. And when you do come up to the board, you will speak directly to the board, not to each other, to members of the audience. We will limit your speaking time to three minutes. We'll give you a, you'll hear a beeping when it starts getting close to three minutes, and it'll beep down. We're going to keep this meeting to be very orderly and in good fashion, and I'm not going to put up with any shenanigans, okay? At this point, Jennifer, this is yours.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from agriculture to planned unit development. Applicants are Charles Alfred and Catherine Plip. Agents are Joseph Seerly and DR Horton Incorporated. 165 acres comprises four parcels located at 126 Alfred Road, 140 Alfred Road, 400 State Road 207, and one on assigned address. The applicant is seeking approval for the purpose of establishing a multi-use development with a maximum of 700 single-family homes, approximately 60,000 square feet of non-residential commercial, an amenity center, and a park. Infrastructure within the subdivision includes an access road along State Road 207, internal roadways, sidewalks, lift stations if applicable, and stormwater management areas. The parcels are designated urban services on the adopted future land use map. The vacant undeveloped parcels have approximately 3,550 feet of paved road frontage on State Road 207 and 3,530 feet of unpaved road frontage on Alfred Road. According to Putnam County GIS reference map, there is approximately six acres of wetlands. Should this PUD be approved, the applicant will then submit for a Type 1 subdivision plot. The Development Review Committee will review the preliminary subdivision plot for compliance with state, with local, state, and federal regulations and their site-specific regulations listed within the accompanying development agreement. Agencies including but not limited to Florida Department of Health, Putnam County Public Works, Emergency Services, and St. John's River Water Management District will review plans to ensure the development will not adversely affect surrounding properties. Once the DRC is satisfied with the preliminary plot, county staff will arrange public hearings for a formal consideration by the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. The Putnam County BRCC may authorize the chairman to sign a preliminary development order for the preliminary plot. Once the preliminary plot is authorized, the developer may proceed with an application for site work permit to install underground utilities, grading, and stormwater facilities. Once all the site work for the associated subdivision has been complete, the developer may submit the final plot including as-built depictions of supporting infrastructure. The final plot will be presented to the Putnam County BRCC as a consent agenda item. Any member of the BRCC may pull the item for discussion. If no discussion is to be had on the plot, the BRCC may authorize the chairman to sign the plot and accompany in resolution. Any commercial development not associated with the residential subdivision will also be subject to review by the DRC. Aerial. Future land use. FEMA. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from agriculture to planned unit development with staff-edited development agreement as the request is consistent with the requirements for PUD zoning, consistent with the future land use designation, and consistent with other comprehensive plan goals, objectives, and policies.
Thank you, Jennifer. Are there questions of her?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I have a question about, do the schools get involved with this at all?
Schools?
Yeah.
No, sir.
They don't have an input at all for the, because I know it's going to impact the schools.
Concurrence?
At what point do they do?
During our DRC, they get invited actually to all of our DRC, so they will be involved to make sure they're involved with all of that.
Okay. Thank you.
I said, yes, they will be involved during our DRC.
Okay. The school board will be involved with the DRC and with planning going forward because this will be a concurrency issue with the Board of Education, potentially with a number of new students coming in and shifting or building or whatever they need to do. That's up to them. That's not up to us. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. At this point, I'll bring the owner or the owner's applicant up to speak. Oh, okay.
So as you want to go forward, you just hit that right arrow right there. And if you hit it accidentally, you can go back.
Now, are we going to get it up here? Thank you. Please identify yourself by name and address and go forward.
Bob Porter with DR Horton, 4220 Race Track Road, St. John's, Florida 32259. So this project we're calling Alfred Farms, and I think you've got a pretty clear description of it. The Alfred family wanted to memorialize that name because it was their, you know, where their family has been farming for some time. It's just north of Cracker Swamp Road. I think everybody understands where that is. We're doing almost all residential where the, where Alfred Road comes out to 207. We're proposing to do some commercial. Hopefully, we'll get convenience store, gas pumps, that kind of thing to make it convenient for the residents to be able to buy a gallon of milk or fill up the tank. This kind of shows the proposed layout. We've not started engineering because we don't do that, obviously, until we have the approval on the zoning. But we're looking at doing a nice master plan community. You'll see most of the lots that are shown there are backing up to either the wetland that we're trying to preserve or else to a lake. With, again, with a fairly expensive entryway to try and let everybody know that they have arrived somewhere. You'll see on the side, there's a silhouette of a person, gives you kind of an idea of the scale. So we're looking at something that really announces that you have arrived at the neighborhood. And in the back of the Alfred Farms, there'll be like water cascading down that sign. Most of this, I think we already talked about, we have a maximum of 60,000 square feet. It's just two corner parcels, basically. And we are in the urban services. The county decided that this was the area where they wanted to encourage residential growth, so they have changed the land used to urban services, which allows, and staff will know better than I do, I think something over 20 units to the acre, and we're less than a quarter of that. We intend to have everything except, Alfred Road is a county road now, county maintained road. We will pave that, we'll put sidewalks on both sides. On all of the interior streets, we will, we will have either the community development district formed to maintain them, or else the homeowners association will take care of it. So not a lot of expense for the county. And really, that's it, other than any questions that you may have.
Do we have questions? Please stick around because we may have questions. We may bring you back up to answer questions. Jerry has a question.
Will there be an access off? Will there be an access off Cracker Swamp Road? I mean, will it be used off?
Well, Alfred now goes through to Cracker Swamp.
Say again?
Alfred Road right now, it's a road, it's a dirt road, county dirt road, but it does go all the way from 207 to Cracker Swamp.
Okay. Do you intend to use that as an access for a large development?
No, we intend to bring everybody in off 207. And 207, I know we will do some intersection improvements because it's a FDOT road. They're going to require us to do some, probably a right turn lane in. They may make us extend the existing left turn lane, whatever, but everything we do will be centered on 207.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Hearing none, please stick around. We may bring you back up. Okay, at this point, we will entertain comments. I will direct the board to an email that was received by Ms. Kidd on June 11th from someone who wished their comments and concerns to be known. Do I need to read this into the record, Mr. Perry?
I think I would, Madam Chair.
Okay. My voice is on, and I will. This is an email from a gentleman named John C. Jenkins IV. "Good evening, esteemed members of the Putnam County Planning Commission. My name is John Jenkins. I'm emailing you today as someone who is deeply invested in Putnam's future. Though I now reside just over the county line in Elkton, Florida, I was born and raised here and still own property and have a business that thrives in this very community. Putnam County holds a special place in my heart. I envision it blossoming into a beautiful and desirable river town, a true North Florida gem. This proposed housing development presents a golden opportunity to put us on that path. The location is strategic. Situated near the main highway leading to the rapidly growing St. John's County, it capitalizes on existing growth patterns. This development will not disrupt the rural character of Putnam County at large. We're focusing on a specific area in East Palatka, an ideal spot for new housing that benefits both locals and newcomers. I understand concerns about preserving our agricultural heritage. However, this development does not have to come at the expense of our rural identity. We can embrace responsible growth that enhances our community, not detracts from it. This project offers a chance to increase housing options for Putnam County residents, attract new families and businesses, boosting our local economy, create jobs, and stimulate further development. Putnam County deserves to thrive. This development represents a significant step forward. I urge the commission to approve this proposal and allow Putnam County to reach its full potential. Thank you for your time and consideration. John C. Jenkins IV." So that is now entered into record. At this point, I'm going to bring people up to speak. And again, I would urge everyone to refrain from comments, gestures, any kind of audible sounds, just let the speaker speak. Our first speaker is LV Tilton, who has also presented to us a written copy of what he plans to say. Mr. Tilton, if you would come forward and give your name and address, you'll have three minutes to speak.
I'm Larry Tilton. I've lived at 340 East Cracker Swamp Road for almost 60 years. I'm well acquainted with the area and the farming community and the stress that's put on the area by the increased traffic flow to and from St. Augustine and Flagler Estates. The property, the owner's requesting this charge for, change for is between Highway 207 and Cracker Swamp Road, which ties into 207, making 207 the only corridor line ingress and egress for this proposal. And 207 is already stressed with the morning and evening commute. If any of you have ever been over there in the morning or in the evening, you won't have any trouble seeing what I'm talking about. The property is plus or minus 150 acres, and I was told by a representative in the building in zoning that the purchaser intends to build 700 homes on this 150 acres. If my information is correct, some of the property will be used as streets. The remainder will average five houses per acre. This density is a problem that Putnam County does not need. With 700 houses averaging one or two cars per house means there would be plus or minus 1,000 cars leaving in the morning and 1,000 cars returning daily. 207 does not need this additional stress. It would be bad for the area and bad for Putnam County. Let's don't do it. Less than three miles from the proposed destruction, 207 dead ends at Highway 117, which are already overstressed and at times resembles a parking lot from 207 to Palatka. East Palatka cannot stand the additional stress. Let's just don't do it. Even though maps may indicate subdivisions in the area in your packages, most are actively cultivated farms. This foolishness will destroy the farming industry in East Palatka that generates a lot of dollars. I've got millions written down there. I can do the math if you prefer. In revised, in revenue yearly and replaces yearly, and we're going to replace it with a financial liability on Putnam County with this project. If allowed, the destruction will not end with this project. It is known that the potential purchaser has approached neighboring owners in an attempt to purchase their property so they can spread this cancer, which will consume the entire area.
Sir, I'd ask you to bring it to a close.
Ma'am?
Please bring your comments to a close. Your time is, your three minutes are up.
I'm sorry. Say it again. I've got a hearing problem.
Would you please bring your comments to a close?
Yes, ma'am. Got two more little points here.
Well, we've got your written statement and your overtime. So if you would, please sit down.
Well, that's one way to shut folks down that you don't want to hear.
Well, we set the time limit for everybody equally. Our second speaker is Jeff Counts. Mr. Counts, if you would come forward, please.
My name is, my name is Jeff Counts, J-E-T-T. I live at 120 Turner Road, which is maybe a little more than half a mile from the proposed development. I believe it is a very bad idea. The increased population will hurt the surrounding community. We do not want it. Palatka, East Palatka is already overcrowded. The streets are full. It's hard to get around. None of the surrounding residents want this to happen. The farming community will be hurt tremendously. Soon as one of these subdivisions come in, they're going to be putting more and more all around. It'll be overdeveloped, just like St. John's County. They're moving this way quick. It'll be overdeveloped, just like St. Johns County, they're moving this way quick. I just please, would like you to not approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Counts, and I'm sorry I pronounced your name wrong. Our next speaker is Wade Alford.
I am the great grandson of Bryant Centers Alford, who bought the first piece of this property on October 25th, 1899.
Could you give us your address, please?
237 Warshester Road, corner Park, Florida. I'm opposed to this. I'm also a farmer. It is definitely urban sprawl. It is obvious what this is. I have friends that have had this happen in St. Johns County, they're farmers, up pops in elementary school, and then they're complaining about him spraying his crops. There's drainage issues, there's traffic issues, that's a limited access highway. I called, just one note for sure y'all need to make, I called up here Monday to this office and was told there are no plans for me to review. That's pretty sad, because I look at what you got here, that density of, of people stuck in something that's agriculture intensive, that's crazy. That's pure craziness. So, 152 acres will produce about 4 million heads of cabbage a year. Has anybody measured the impact on L&amp;M Farms and their packing house? They have 300 people that make between $1,000 and $1,500 a week, and that place runs year round. They're not pulling stuff off the local fields, they're pulling stuff from other parts of the United States, packaging it, putting a price tag on it, and off it goes to Audis and Lindick, and Publix, and all your local stores. So that economic impact, that's a loss there, of people spending money. And, and L&amp;M Farms probably got a payroll of $300,000, $400,000 a week. So, you know, are your houses going to have that kind of economic impact on Putnam County? This is a precedent-setting move. I have property on the other end of State Route 207, and both of my maternal and paternal grandparents had homes on State Route 207. Both of them were lost to the four lane. And the property I have on the other end of, of 207, like the previous gentleman, Mr. Tilton, said, that's a nightmare, in the morning and in the afternoon. It, it is a nightmare. There are bobwhite quail on this property, there are gopher turtles on this property, I hunted it, I still hunt it occasionally, and all this secrecy is, is about to blow up, you know? I have a secret, but I can't tell you what it is, it's something big that's going to happen. Well, now we know. So much of the TCAA is protected in the wintertime, by the river, the climate, it's unique farming land, it's unique geologically, geographically, and these are things that can't be replaced. Once you pave it over, it's done. So as you can tell, besides from the facts here, and the unpopularity, there's also an emotional attachment there, and I appreciate that consideration.
If you'd bring it to a close, please. Thank you. I will say that the plans, the detailed plans for this project are not going to be available for a long time. What they have presented us is a preliminary idea, so we can get the zoning started. They will then come back with their subdivision plans, that will be later down the road. We'll also have to come back before this board and also before the B.O.C.C. And I know I will have to sign the subdivision plat, and the Board of County Commission Chairman will have to sign it, the DRC will be involved in it, so there will be a lot of steps down the road. This is step number one. And, so, I'm sorry you were told there were no plans to review. What we have is basically what we were shown on the, on the presentation. So that's all that we have right now. There will be more to come as this progresses, and it will be advertised, and you will certainly have a right to come in and look at plans. So I want to make that clear, and apologize that you were led to believe there was nothing available, okay? Next speaker is Gina Tilton Counts. If you would come up and give us your name and address.
My name is Gina Tilton Counts. I live at 9470 Barrel Factory Road, Hastings. My husband Johnny and I have lived on part of our cattle ranch for 33 years. That's just across the county line into, into St. Johns County. Our property borders, the south end of our property borders.
Get you, get you into the microphone there. You have to speak directly into it.
Did y'all hear what I said so far?
Yes.
Okay. Our property, the south end of our property borders Cracker Swamp Road, a quarter of a mile of Cracker Swamp Road. Our two daughters and their husbands, and three grandchildren live on the ranch as well, and I am against this massive 700-home development. I was raised for 24 years on the part of our ranch that's on the Putnam County side that borders Cracker Swamp Road. There's a couple of miles of it that, the north side of our property that borders Cracker Swamp Road. Our two sons, and that's them right here behind me, Jeff just got up and spoke, and Jody's going to speak soon. They had to come off the ranch and get here as fast as they could to speak, but anyway, they, them and their wives live on the part of the ranch that's on the Putnam County side. And we, we have continued to carry on the cowcalf operation, raising beef, as I did growing up, working with my dad, and it's a lot of hard work, a lot of long hours, and we have never made much money at it. We are all very passionate about agriculture and being able to feed people. It's a way of life for us, we love it, it's what we do. That's worth far more than getting rich, in my eyes. We would much rather be farmers. We did not plan on getting teared up, but I am passionate about it. We would much rather do what we love, love what we do and what we're doing, and out there with the, the animals, and we do have a farm that we lease out to a farmer that grows lots of cabbage, that feeds lots of people, and we grow a lot of beef, and we would much rather do that, and we have a lot of people around us that would much rather keep on doing that and feeding, feeding the world, and feeding our neighbors, than to become rich off of a lot of people moving in. I'm scared, I'm really, really scared. This is just the beginning in our area.
If you could bring your comments to a close.
Once concrete has covered these farms, something to eat is gone forever.
Okay.
And this will be the beginning of something detrimental to us. It's going to be a big impact. I would much rather see 10-acre ranchettes go on it.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that.
Than see 700 homes go on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. At this point, I will bring Jody Counts up, Counts up.
Jody Counts, 331 East Cracker Swamp Road, East Palatka. We're against this, there's no if and buts about it. Development and growth is a cancer to agriculture that will slowly eat away at the community around, and to put this in the heart of agriculture in East Palatka will be detrimental, detrimental to us all in our way of life through farming, ranching, and anything else that has to do with this. And I advise y'all, think hard on that, and do that, and we don't like the traffic either. Going down the roads, cars wide open, it gets worse every day. We drive tractors down these roads, haul horses, cattle, and steady or steady watching your back, cars going everywhere, and the access will be at Cracker Swamp, or 207, but who's to say they can't come out on Cracker Swamp when it's too packed to come out on 207, and then backs us up completely? So, either they're going to block it, or it's just going to come. So, that's about all I have to say about that.
Thank you. I believe that there will be a, a large buffer and probably a fence on Cracker Swamp Road that will prevent anyone from having egress and ingress off of that road, is that correct?
Mr. Parker, you're talking about that naturally, you mean Cracker Swamp?
Okay, okay. They won't come off, they won't come off a proper, a Cracker Swamp Road from this subdivision, right?
But Alford, would you pave through those neighborhoods? We can only get that right?
Could you come up to the mic, please, sir, and answer this question?
The part of Alford Road that goes past our project will be paved, we'll be paving it, putting in sidewalks. The rest of it is dirt road, and will stay dirt road at this point.
Will there be access to the subdivision via Cracker Swamp Road?
Unless the county chooses to close Alford Road down, absolutely. It's, there's access.
Okay. I didn't understand that, I'm sorry.
No, Alford Road goes all the way from 207 to Cracker Swamp.
Right.
And we're not proposing to change that, we're proposing to pave about half of it, and then you'll still have to take the dirt road down to Cracker Swamp.
Okay, okay. Our next speaker is, have I gotten all of your family, Ms. Counts? Johnny, are you ready to come up?
Well, my name's Johnny Counts, I live there at 9470 Barrel Factory Road with my wife there in Cracker Swamp. And yes, my family has a lot of property, about three tenths of a mile from this proposed project. First of all, I want to thank each of y'all for serving on this board, because I know what it is to more or less be pro bono on things like this. Y'all had to take time away, except for Mike, I don't think he's pro bono. But anyway, thank y'all, I'm, I've been in your shoes, and I'm still in your shoes. But I oppose, oppose the variance for the amount of density. That's the one big thing, is, you know, agriculture intensive, residential cannot be compatible with intensive agriculture. There's other things that can go there, industrial, we can deal with, we can deal with a little bit of commercial, but residential, there's just certain sights and sounds and fragrances of nature that a lot of people don't realize are there whenever they see that big, pretty farm picture. It's sad to see such valuable land go away. I mean, that's, we can't mitigate farms like we can mitigate the wetlands. I wish we could, but you just can't grow stuff anywhere, and that's something I think we should be looking at working on, too. If you look at that Putnam County symbol right there, that's a golden nugget, that's what I've called it for a while, because we're surrounded by these counties that, for some reason, I don't agree with the premise that more brings prosperity to the county, because if it did, St. Johns wouldn't be in this position they are in. I also disagree with the premise that, you know, it's going to bring in more revenues that are needed by the county, that continuous revenues, it said, because this farm has been continuously bringing an economic impact to the county for many years. And most reports that I see have the agricultural with its green belt only costing the county 20 to 30 percent for every dollar of ad valorem tax it brings in for services, compared to about a dollar forty for every dollar on a residential. So, we've been subsidizing a lot of residential for a long time, even though, you know, we kind of get blamed for, for not paying our fair share. You know, more people just bring, doesn't bring more revenue, it just brings more expense. The obvious negatives you've heard, you know, we've got the traffic, there's drainage issues there, too. East Palatka is, does have some drainage issues on the farm. We've got a loss of that valuable soil, production of food, the jobs, the, the economic impact that all go with that, that we have. Agriculture is the second economic engine in, in Florida, so.
If you could ramp it up, sir.
I urge you to vote no on this. The density, that high density, it's our agriculture corridor, it's.
Thank you.
It's not conducive for it.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Steve Singleton.
My name is Steve Singleton, Singleton and Sons Farms. I live at 242 Carter Crabtree Road in East Palatka. Born and raised in East Palatka, and lived in Putnam County all my life. I grow potatoes, St. Johns, Flagler County, and Putnam County. My largest landholding is in Putnam County, on 700 acres in Putnam County, 450 of those acres is on Walden Road. That's directly affected by this project. Part of those acres butts right up against that project. My biggest concern, several of them, one is drainage. You can't farm vegetables without being able to drain rainwater. Another issue is traffic. Have a hard enough time right now with traffic on 207 and Flagler Estates, moving tractors and big equipment up and down the road. Most times, we have to get a police escort to do it. The third issue I have is, in my experience, when people move in to an agricultural area from other areas, they have no idea what happens on a farm, you know? Right now, we're harvesting potatoes, my potato harvester starts at 6:00 in the morning. Most people don't get up that time of morning. They're going to have a problem with me spraying my crop, they're going to have a problem with dust. I've had issues with people moving into the area and not wanting me to clean the drainage canals, thinking that it's going to affect them if I clean the drainage canals, not knowing that it's going to benefit them if I clean the drainage canals. So, that's my issue. Been farming all my life, farmed with my dad, since '85, since graduating high school. I grew 1,000 acres of potatoes, got four sons that farm with me, and I'm here to fight for them so that they can continue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mark Litton.
Thank you for the opportunity, I'm Mark Litton. I live at 105 Hiawatha Court, East Palatka. I'm also the Vice President of Economic Development at the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce. The Putnam County B.O.C.C. and the Chamber are partners in economic development, and basically what I want to address is the housing problem that we have. Our new five-year strategic action plan calls for the creation of 750, 1,000 new primary jobs in Putnam County over the next five years. Where are they going to live? I moved here two years ago from Ohio and had major difficulty finding a place to live, and we lucked out and got into condos there at Hiawatha. So, the only thing I wanted to say was that we need workforce housing in Putnam County, because if we grow jobs, they got to live somewhere, and we don't want them living outside the county and working here, we want them to live here and spend their money here. So, those are my comments, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer those.
Thank you. Appreciate your coming forward. Our next speaker is Trevlin Davidson. Do I say Trevlin? Thank you.
Actually, the name's hyphenated, it's Trevlin Alford Davidson.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I just have a few bullet points I'd like to address. I wasn't planning to, but I am actually a resident of St. Johns County now. However, I grew up in Putnam County, this is considered my home, I went to school here, graduated from high school from Palatka South.
Could you give us your address, please, ma'am?
Yeah, I can. It is 1528 Green Ridge Circle West, St. Johns, Florida. And as many people have already mentioned, the growth in St. Johns County, I have had a perfect opportunity to examine that, and have thought many times how I would like to return to this area, because the farmlands, the forests, they're gone, and that's what I see happening here. First of all, I'd just like to ask you, as the Planning Commission, to think, I don't have the answers to this, but I'd like for you, you're the ones that do. The presentation that we had from D.R. Horton said that this was consistent with a comprehensive plan for development in Putnam County. Now, I, I question that, and I'd like for you to think about if that is so. And is this really the area that you really want to develop? And is this really the area that you really want to develop? I'm wondering, too, if this rezoning is not perhaps something that you call spot zoning, rezoning, which really benefits only a few people, a few private people, at the expense of others. And when I say that, I echo all of the comments that have made, been made prior. I see the problems that are going to come from this because I've experienced it in St. John's County. I don't think this is the answer to your housing problem. I really don't. What's going to happen is you're going to have people from outside come in. Nothing against Putnam County. You need housing. I know that. I don't see this as it. I see St. John's County people moving in and other people moving in this direction. I agree, it is going to make congestion horrible for people coming back and forth. I'm trying to see, one more bullet point I wanted to point out is that when you talk about the government, I see that tax money's already been invested in drain tiles with 75 percent sharing of costs by water management just a few years ago. So now, are we going to tear all those up and start again? I think it's really admirable that this is going to be called Alford Farms, but this does not change my heart. My father was the oldest son of the ten kids that lived on that farm, and-
If you could just bring your comments to a close.
I will, I will. I do not see a 400-resident complex really being a way to memorialize. That, that's fluff.
Thank you.
And would like for you to consider all of our comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And, did I bring Marshall Rawson up yet? Are you here to speak on this case? Okay.
I'm Marshall Clayton Rawson. My address is 105 28 U.S. Highway 301, Hampton, Florida. I do not live in Putnam County, but I have ag land adjacent to this county, and I run an organization in this county. I've come out here today to support a friend, but on top of that, and as importantly, I've come here to defend, defend Florida, our culture, our environment, our food security, and our quality of life. And there is a direct correlation between our quality of life and when we continue down this road of endless development, the quality of life plummets. By 2060, if current trends continue, Florida's to have a population of 36 million people.
Please speak into the microphone.
Are you ready for that? Thirty-six million people. And while this is an issue for the Florida Legislature, we need bold leadership that prevent this from happening. Zoning is a function of county government. What's at stake here is food. Food that provide, food that provides for millions of people, jobs, water retention for the Florida aquifer, as well as flood mitigation for this county and many others. It is at this, it is the interest of this county to defend the tri-county agricultural area from the onslaught of development that is consuming our entire state and our way of life. I've heard my whole life politicians talk about smart growth and sustainable development when they can never draw a line in the sand, nor do they ever have a fixed picture of one that's growth and that, and that development is no longer smart or sustainable. But because of these politicians, seven million acres of ag, seven million acres of green space is at threat by 2060. That includes 3 million acres of existing ag lands, 2.7 million acres of wildlife habitat, and 1.6 million acres of existing forest lands. We should not expect that if one buys agricultural property that it's going to be rezoned at a future time at the whims of excess development or whatever the Chamber of Commerce or the new developer bids at the county commission. We must draw a line in the sand to defend our agricultural areas and our quality of life here in Florida. And that's why I'm urging this, this board to deny the zoning change and defend Putnam County in the beauty left in this great state of Florida. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sheri Ashby.
I'm on the next case.
You're on the next case? And Wendy Museline?
How are y'all doing?
Good.
Good. I'm Wendy Museline. I live in East Palaca, 122 Old Brick Road. Born and raised Walton Road. Been here all my life, came back after getting a PhD in environmental engineering, and I spent the last eight years working in agriculture in Putnam County. I represent IFIS, represent our commercial farmers. Glad to hear them out today. Just want to give you guys a few numbers that you should be aware of. You might be aware of these, you might not. We farm in the tri-county area, Flagler, St. John's, and Putnam. Flagler, we do an ag census every five years. 2017, Flagler had 79,000 ag acres. 2022, five years later, they're down 8 percent to 72,000. St. John's County, five years ago, 34,000 acres, down to 23,000 acres. That's 31 percent down in ag lands. Now, Putnam has actually gone up in our ag land, which is a phenomenal feat, okay? That's a big deal. And this 150 acres represents 4.5 million tons of potatoes per year, okay? Putnam County, right now, has the opportunity to be the breadbasket of Florida. I mean, with all the development going on, we have a special opportunity to maintain our ag land and truly be a breadbasket for this state. And you guys remember what happened in COVID, when all the supply lines shut down and you can't ship produce? Who's going to eat? Well, if Putnam County, off of 150 acres, is producing 4.5 million pounds of potatoes per year, we're going to at least eat potatoes. Like Forrest Gump said, we're going to figure out a lot of ways to eat potatoes. And, and just an economic number, you guys should know that economically, agriculture contributes $74 million yearly. It's an economic driver. Somebody said second. I guess tourism's ahead of that. And our cropland itself, which is only 13,000 acres in Putnam County, crops, vegetable crops and edible crops, is a $62 million economic impact. So, please don't take this decision lightly. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Leonard Freeman. You used to sit on this side of this adias.
Thank you for remembering. Yes, I did. I was on your side for about 13 years.
Give us your address, sir.
I'm at 134 Pierce Street, East Palaca, Florida. My wife and I are owners of agricultural production land in both Putnam County and St. John's County. I'm part of a seven-generation farmer family. And there's a couple things that you learn when you've got your feet in the muck and your hands in the dirt. And that is that there are precious things that should not ever be destroyed, but in fact are in our custody. And being in our custody, we should take every measure that we can to keep them safe. My grandfather said it's our responsibility to take care and custody of cultivable lands because, sounds like an old cliche, you hear it all the time, they aren't making any more of it. And yes, I was on your side for 13 years, and not once, but many times, these kind of decisions came up, and they were hard, hard decisions. Most of the time, or 100 percent of the time, if it was up to me to have a decision and provide a vote, I would vote for what was the least impactful to our lands. What is the least impactful to our water, which I also spent a few years dealing with the, with the Water Management District. We've all heard about what happens when you turn a piece of land that's producing upwards of 5 million pounds, tons, rather, of, of potatoes a year. And the main impact to produce that is some tractors going in and out and some diggers going in and out. And it provides jobs for dozens of people, if not hundreds. And it does not provide, for traffic problems, the creation of new stoplights on, on a major It doesn't do that because it's busy making food for all of us.
You're just about out of time, Leonard.
I only need five more seconds.
Do it.
Do not vote to destroy arable, cultivable land. If you want to make a subdivision, find a place that is not cultivated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak either for or against Hearing none, I would ask the agent if you would like to come forward. I'll give you a few minutes to rebut anything that you have heard and to answer any questions that have come up. But if you would, keep it very, very short and succinct.
I'll be very quick. I understand change is hard for everybody. I agree farms are important, and I'm not going to try and argue that. I just wanted to point out, your staff report says that the traffic on 207 will not be a problem, that capacity is there. It is, got a land use of urban service, and the staff report again says future development is encouraged in this designation where urban services, the water and sewer, which are at the corner of the property, are available. So, nobody ever wants houses next to them, I understand that. But this is the area that Putnam County made the decision was the place they wanted to encourage development. So, that's, and the, the services are available, so that's kind of why we picked it.
Thank you. And I will clarify that when we redid the comprehensive plan a few years back, we did extend urban services all the way out Highway 207 to the St. John's County line, I believe. No, not quite. But we did extend urban services out quite a ways, 207, and there is water and sewer already available. And one of the reasons was to encourage development in that area. So that was a comp plan decision that was made four years ago. So, so-
Real quick, if I could, urban services goes just past this property.
Okay.
The very next road on the right, on this side, it's urban services, on the other side is-
Okay. I couldn't remember for sure. It's been, been a few years, and a lot of maps have come across the desk since then.
This is about the first.
So, but that, that was something that took place with the revision of the comprehensive plan. At this point, I'm going to bring it back to the board and close the public hearing portion of this meeting. We'll bring it back to the board for discussion and then possible action.
Madam Chair, I do have a few questions for the applicant I thought would probably come up in the public hearing portion, but they didn't. So, if I could ask-
Yes.
Just in looking at this, there's a, the minimum lot width of 40 feet. To me, that, that, that is very small. I think we just did a RV park and they were 30 feet. So, to me, 40 feet is, is, if we were to approve this, recommend approval to the county commission, is, is 40 feet set in stone, or is that something that we could work on?
If you recommend it with conditions, that's, that's fine, and we'll, you know, we'll see what happens. But I would like to just kind of explain, one of the things I keep hearing is about how we need to preserve agricultural acreage. If we make the lots bigger to get the same number of new homes, we know we need new homes, we've got to chew up more land. So, what we are finding is that our customers prefer the small lot. Most folks today don't enjoy mowing the lawns. They don't care about getting outside. So, if I give them the choice between a wider lot and one more bedroom, 95 percent will take the extra bedroom. It helps us keep the cost down.
The other thing I saw in here is parking. It just says two parking spaces per dwelling unit. Are there garages planned for these?
Yes.
Can that, that, I don't see that anywhere in this development agreement. I just wanted to make sure we weren't having a house with no garage, just a parking pad.
No, they'd be, basically, we're doing typically two-car garages and a driveway that holds two cars. So, I think the two-car parking is basically out of the, out of the code, out of the land development code.
Okay. It's the minimum.
I think those are, those are my main questions.
And just to clarify, this, these are site-built homes, correct?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of the board? I'm sorry, sir, we've closed the public portion of this meeting. Any other questions of the board? Comments from the board? You can make comments. You're up, Jerry.
This one really presents some difficulty for me. I've lived on farms a good bit of my life. I know what Mr. Freeman was talking about with the dirt, your feet and your fingers and everything else. Putnam County has always been a rural community. And I want to tell you, you, the lot size has already been brought up. I went a little farther than that. I figured it out to be one-tenth of an acre for each one of these houses, which is hardly enough room to put a mobile home on. It, it's a difficult thing. I don't know if y'all driven through parts of Rivertown or maybe up to Sadi Road, and you see this development just exactly like this. These 40-foot wide lots, the houses are 30 feet wide, the garages on the front take up the entire front of the house, and then the house itself is another 60 feet deep. That's not Putnam County, folks. It just is not Putnam County. I don't care how you look at it, never will be. I think folks in this county have always looked forward to having a little more space than that. You know, I understand that the price of land, the price of development is, is extreme nowadays. I worked in development a good portion of my life and seen it happen. I've seen many areas be destroyed. St. John's County, in my mind, is not worth living in anymore. I, I think it's just a total wreck. There are people moving to Putnam County every day because of that mess over there, striving to get something much better. And, and frankly, you can for your money at this point still. So, I think that's, it's a quality of life issue for me. I just don't see a quality life in a development like this. It just doesn't work. I also saw in here that the water, that the development may be required to pay for part of the water and sewer, for crying out loud, for that kind of a development, they ought to pay for it all. I'm talking about to get the rest of the lines out there. But I guess that's, pretty much sums up what I have to say. I just don't think it's a good fit for Putnam County.
Thank you, Jerry. Chris?
Well, I'm predominantly, always have been, for the landowner because I felt like if you owned a piece of property, you should be able to do what you want. But I'm kind of torn between the two things here, you know? I understand if you own a piece of property, you should be able to do what you want. But at the other hand, I think that we ought to try to preserve what we have in the, in the agricultural field, too. And there's got to be a, a better mix than what we're- And there's got to be a better mix than what we're talking about here, in my opinion. So, I'll just tell you right now, my thought is, is I would not approve it.
Anyone else on the board having something they would like to share?
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, Mr. DeSantis.
You know, all the years that I've been on this planning board, we've been looking for different ways to promote growth, population in this, in Putnam County, because we do need more homes here. But I know 207, I drive it almost every day. I know some of the problems we've heard here from the farmers, and how they have to move their crops. I've seen the crop, I mean, I've seen the trailer trucks coming down the road, with people just driving over them, cutting them off, et cetera. I'm kind of afraid that if we approve a development this close to our farming areas, like, we're right on top of it from what they're saying, and they want to do, it's going to be a domino effect. The next track of land will get closer, and closer, and closer, and before you know it, our farming industry will disappear. And my opinion is, Putnam County is a diamond in the rough, and what makes it that is when you compare it to all the surrounding counties, and the kind of development that they bring in, and the kind of density they bring in. And as Jerry said, 10 units on an acre, 12 units on an acre, I would just be against putting this kind of a development right on top of our farming industry. So in my opinion, I'd be voting against this right now.
Thank you. Anyone else? One question I have, are you locked into 700 units? Is this a development that if it were to go forward, you would be willing to greatly reduce the number of units? Would that be a potential for you?
I think what we will end up with is a little bit less than 700, but over 600. And for me to make it financially feasible, I cannot greatly reduce it. And again, if we cut the density in half, then to build the same number of homes, you're going to need twice as much land, whether it's farmland, or it's pine land, or whatever. So, density frankly kind of helps with trying to preserve land, as opposed to just, if we did 10-acre lots, I would need 6,000 acres of farmland to be able to do it. So, I don't really think the big lots is helping with what you're trying to accomplish.
What kind of price range are you looking at for these homes?
We'll do what we can do based on the market. My expectation is, if we were started today, we would probably start around 300, and the vast majority of them would...
Please hold it down.
Most of them would be in the 300s.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Being a former farmer, potato farmer, matter of fact, Lucia County has, where I bought a piece of property, it's one unit per 10 acres. And at one unit per 10 acres, there's a house on there, and usually, it's all cattle in Seville and Pearson, a lot of fern, and that works. In that community, it works, and it's great. It's not congested, it's quiet, and it's great, but I just, that development on 207 is just, it's right in the middle of the farmland. I've farmed in Long Island, New York, went up there in the summers and worked, and it was always a housing development showed up, and the first thing that happened, the dust, the noise, just what Mr. Singleton talked about. You get out there early in the morning, and we can't control which way the wind's blowing, which way the smell's going, the noise. Some days it goes one way to the west, some days it goes to the east. So, it's just, being a former farmer, it's tough to sell a piece of land. I understand about selling land. I sold mine, but I sold it to another farmer. I was glad that happened, and I enjoy my retirement, but I know it's nice to have one house per 10 acres, and you can have cattle and still be ag. I make a little money. It's not a lot, but I do make a little bit. It's not a whole heck of a lot. You've got to be bigger, you've got to be bigger to make money in ag.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chairperson.
Yes, sir, Mr. DeSantis.
I'd like to move that we deny approval of PUD 24-00004 on this rezoning from agriculture to planned unit development, where I don't feel it blends into the surrounding farming area.
Deny. I have a second to deny. How can you relate that to the Land Development Code and the comp plan? Because we need to, our decisions need to be relative to those two documents.
I just don't feel it's the right thing at the right time at the right place. And as an opinion, I've seen developments like this start in communities, and in a farming area that we have, it will be a detrimental thing, and it'll just make a domino effect on the rest of the farming area.
Okay. I'm not trying to be contrary, but I do know we have to have a proper motion. Mr. Perry, can you clarify that for me?
As you can see on the form in front of you, that it has to be found that this particular PUD is not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan. That's basically, needs to be the motion.
Okay.
I'll amend it, then. I agree with everything you just said. I think it'll be detrimental to the surrounding community.
It's not consistent with the comp plan and the Land Development Code.
Not consistent with the comp plan. I don't think our plan is to destroy the farming industry. However, the wording has to be made, I'm going to vote against. I just want it to be known that this, I believe this is the wrong thing to do in this county at this time.
I understand that, I just want to make sure that we...
In reality, it is consistent with our comp plan.
Right, it is...
Because our comp plan says it, that's what it is. And really, if you think about this, bottom line is, we're not in the politics. We don't, you know, the public says what they're going to say. We have to listen to them. But when it comes to the politics, our job is to decide whether it meets what the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan.
That's right.
And that's what it does. It really does. And we don't have to like it, and we don't have to necessarily support it, but our job is to decide whether it is in compliance, and it actually is in compliance with our comprehensive plan.
That's...
And we don't have to like what we say, but that's the fact.
I second what Chris just said.
All right, we have a motion on the floor which does not totally state that denying this application is consistent with the comp plan. And that's the only way we can have a motion. It's got to reference compliance or non-compliance with the Land Development Code and with the Comprehensive Plan.
Now, you don't have to vote for it, but you've got to say it is.
Yeah.
If we were to go back and look at all of the different points in the Land Development Code, and zoning, and everything else in Putnam County, I question whether or not this thing would really be in compliance with that, those codes. It's been a problem that's been irritating me for quite some time now. I look at our future land use maps, they're just...
Yeah, let's hold that thought, and let's clear up this issue with the motion first. Mr. Perry, I need your decision on this. Is that motion proper?
Are you talking about the motion, the first motion that Mr. DeSantis made?
Yes.
Is it proper?
Is it, he's not saying that it's not consistent with the Land Development Code and the comp plan.
Right.
We are required to reference that in a motion. Mr. Helms is shaking his head yes. I need you guys to help me on this one.
Well, one thing I'd like to point out to the members of the Planning Commission, that on the, the answer to your problem is basically found on the second page in your packet. The staff puts together the comprehensive plan consistency, and if you look at that, you will see future land use element, goal A1. Would the board like to look at it right now? In your packet?
That's right. And staff has done a thorough analysis of this.
No, please, just look at it for me, if you don't mind.
Yes.
I'll be happy to read it out loud if you'd like.
Yeah, please, go ahead, I can't find it.
All right. Goal A1, maintain and manage the county's natural resources and quality of life by establishing a pattern of development that is harmonious with the county's natural environment, and supports the rural and agrarian nature of the county while providing a desired lifestyle for county residents.
That's the, that is the objective of the comprehensive plan.
That's exactly right.
That's not one of the items of the comp plan, that's the overall overarching objective.
Exactly, but the question is, is does this development meet that criteria?
Well, I think we have to look at the analysis that staff has provided for us, based on the individual criterion in the comp plan, in the Land Development Code, and not that overarching statement of object, the statement of object of that plan. I wrote that statement, and that statement is the opening paragraph of the comp plan. We have individual sections of the comp plan that have been analyzed by staff. That's the part, the staff report is the part that we have to really analyze as members of this board. And to relate the staff report, and decide whether staff gave us an objective review of comp plan issues and Land Development Code issues, it's not always something we like, and I, it's something we grapple with, and if Mr. Freeman's still here, he remembers many times, we were here till midnight, grappling with some of these issues, where we had to make a decision that wasn't popular, but it was right. So...
We don't have a second on the floor?
Sir, we don't have a second, and we don't have a proper motion on the floor. We are tasked to make our decisions based on the comp plan and the Land Development Code. And we've got to be able to say that the application does not fall within the parameters of the Land Development Code and the comp plan, or it does. And if it doesn't fall within those parameters, by all means, we have to deny it. But if it falls within those parameters, we have to analyze that. So, gentlemen, I've got a director, I've got a senior planner, and I've got an attorney sitting over here. I need your guidance on this motion.
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, sir.
I just need an answer from our attorney. Was my motion, is my motion a legal motion? And can it be voted on? If it's voted down, I accept that. I can just, and my position would be, is that a legal motion?
Mr. DeSantis, a moment ago, you said you were willing to amend your motion...
Yes.
... to be more in line with what we have, which covers a lot of the bases. The reason I brought to your attention the comprehensive plan, and it says right here in the staff report, comprehensive plan consistency. So if you were to say, I am, it's not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan because it doesn't meet the goal, what I just said out loud...
Thank you. I will amend it to state just that.
Well, keep in mind, I don't have a vote, I don't have a dog in the fight, I'm just trying to answer our chairperson's question.
And I would say it does not comply with the goals and objectives of our plan as you just stated. Thank you.
Can I have a proper motion on the floor? Do I have a second? I have a proper motion, and I have a second, that this particular application does not meet the goals and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code. Is there any further discussion? Then I call for a vote, and it's going to be a roll call vote. Mr. Hodge?
No, or wait. Just make sure which way I'm going here.
If you vote no, you're against the motion to deny.
Okay. I deny the motion.
Mr. Frollick?
No.
Mr. Hancock?
A vote to approve.
Mr. Hafner?
Yes, I say yes. I'm approving the motion.
To deny, yes. Aaron?
No.
Mr. DeSantis?
Yes.
Oh, goodie. I vote no. So, we have denied the motion to not approve based on the Land Development Code. Do I hear a motion to approve this application based on the Land Development Code? We can sit here all night, John, guys.
I move that we recommend that the Board of, to the Board of County Commissioners, that we approve PUD 24-00004, as it is consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a proper motion and a second. Again, I will call for a roll call vote. Tom? Aaron?
Yes.
Jerry? Chris?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Didn't want to, but we've got to follow the law.
Chair votes yes. We are just the recommending body, folks. This gets to happen all over again on July 23, and we have to do what we have to do. Board of County Commissioners can get a little bit more political with it, we can't.
That was my intention, Robert.
We shall. We appreciate your coming, we genuinely appreciate your exercising your civic duty and bringing these concerns and questions before us. We definitely do. And I will say to D.R. Horton, we hope you will reconsider and make this a little bit more palatable for the people of Putnam County. And I would ask that you take your comments and your concerns out front, not in the lobby, but out of the building.
Madam Chair?
Yee-haw!
Madam Chair, can we do a two-minute break?
We can certainly take a break. Let's take five. Let's take five. Let's take five. But I think we're ready to reconvene this meeting. It's 5:48. Let's reconvene the meeting and do our last case.
I'm going to go out the back door, maybe.
Okay. Is everyone ready to get started on? Put my glasses on so I can read it. If the -- you clear the lobby, if you would, Brian. All right, we're going to hear PUD 20-00005. And Jennifer, one more time, you're up. I hope they pay you overtime for doing all the cases.
They don't.
All right, gentlemen, are we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Meeting's reconvened. We have Colonel Wells here. I don't know what we've done to deserve that. Well, we appreciate you being here to make sure we're all good. All right, Jennifer, you're up.
Thank you, ma'am. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from Residential Manufactured Home Park and Commercial General C3 to NR2 to planned unit development. The applicant is Greg Kimball. It's a 15.94 acre parcel located at 1488 State Road 20 in Interlochem. Parcel ID number is 18-10-24-25.
Excuse me, Jennifer. Ladies, could we please have your full attention back there? Thank you. Go ahead, Jennifer.
The applicant is seeking approval for the purpose of establishing an overnight recreation park consisting of up to 130 RV sites, no more than two caretaker residences, 10 primitive camping sites, and a bath house. The submitted development agreement outlines the construction to be in one phase with completion occurring by December 31, 2030. The parcel is designated agriculture and commercial on the adopted future land use map. The applicant removed 40 mobile homes, leaving two mobile homes which are occupied by residents of the prior mobile home park and may be used as the caretaker residences in the future. The subject lands have approximately 850 feet of paved road frontage on State Road 20 and approximately 85 feet of road frontage on Southwest 59th Avenue in unpaved county-maintained road. According to the Putnam County GIS Reference Map, there is no apparent wetlands. Should this PUD be approved, the applicant will then submit to Development Review Committee to satisfy additional development requirements. The DRC will review plans to ensure the development is compliant with local, state, and federal development regulations. As it pertains to this property, the DRC will ensure the placement of RV lots is acceptable based on the development agreement, and the Florida Department of Health will review the plans for potable water and sanitary sewer. Other agencies, including but not limited to Putnam County Public Works, Emergency Services, Florida Department of Transportation, and St. John's River Water Management District will review plans to ensure the development will not adversely affect surrounding properties. So aerial view. Future land use. Zoning. FEMA. Wetlands. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from Residential Manufactured Home Park and Commercial General C3 and Residential 2R2 to planned unit development PUD. With staff-proposed development agreement, the request is consistent with the requirements for PUD zoning, consistent with the future land use designation, and consistent with other comprehensive plan, goals, objectives, and policies.
Thank you, Jennifer. Are there any questions of Ms. Gazelle? This is a parcel we've seen before. Go ahead, Erin.
Do you have a question? Did this PUD come about from like a code issue, a code enforcement case, or I'm just curious?
Not that I know of. I think he's just trying to get into compliance.
Okay. I was just -- okay.
It is to bring this property fully in compliance, though, with code?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not aware of any code enforcement issues with it. I think he's just trying to --
Well, we amend the applicant for bringing this forward to get this corrected. Usually, we have to go out and get them. Thank you. All right. Any questions, any other questions of Jennifer? All right, at this time, is the applicant here? Would you like to speak for or come up and give us what you'd like to tell us?
My name is Greg Kimball.
Yeah, you're going to have to speak up.
Greg Kimball, 1488 SR 20 is the address. We bought the property about two years ago, and we've done tons and tons of improvements and additions to it, and we're trying to make it as best we can. And I think it's been improved a lot better than what it was from what we've heard. The reputation of what it had was pretty bad, and I think we've done a lot to make that better. You know, we've gotten reports from the police department and other people in the area that have said that it's a lot better than what it was. We're just trying to continue with that agenda.
Okay. This is your partner?
Yes.
Your wife?
I'm Laney Kimball. It's 1488 State Road 20. And yeah, we bought it together like two years ago. And so we've been doing all the improvements progressively, like paving the roads, bringing in cameras, finishing the clubhouse, just doing everything we could. You know, like that was already there, but making it better what was there. Now, we're just trying to make it compliant, like they said, and make it where it's a safe community for everyone.
Have you had additional people come in and use it?
Yeah. When we took over, it was in a little rough shape. And the previous owner, he'd been able to accomplish getting about half-full because of the state it was in. And we came in and basically did rule enforcement, nothing new, but you know, just no tolerance for certain things. And we did have the sheriff who was readily, we said, "Please help us," and they were happy to help us that we could get that. And so now, yeah, we're definitely about double what we were as far as nice community, where like people love it. It's quiet. It's, you know, they feel like they can come there without having to worry, you know? They can have their children and things there, so.
Okay. We thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
Do you intend? I noticed that there are a couple areas where there's some really nice trees and things like that on the property. Are you all going to try to preserve some of that stuff while you're doing your lots for your vehicles?
Yeah, the improvements we want to make would probably maintain probably 90% of the trees that are there. We want to maintain as much shade as possible for the lots. That's a big plus that we already currently have. And the other lots that we're proposing to add have quite a bit of foliage, and we want to maintain that for sure.
Yeah, I think it'll add a lot to the --
Mm-hmm.
Keep the good character of the place if you're able to do that.
We just talked to our neighbor a little bit about that and what some of her concerns were, and we kind of worked out some of the issues with them. And we're going to put a barrier that they want, like a fence line.
Yeah, you'll be required in your PUD agreement, obviously, to have a barrier, to have a buffer zone there, so.
And some of the amendments we want to do are like a walking path area. So there's not going to be a lot of big impact on developing our buildings or anything like that other than some additional lots.
Yeah, we'd also like to, because we're right on Cooper Lake. It's a small lake, but we've actually been trimming a bunch of the trees so that people now can see it. And we want the path to kind of go around there. And we've even had some people say, "Can we fish there? And we could kayak?" We're like, "Yeah, absolutely." So we'd like to make it where there's like even a path down for people to be able to access it a little more, where they could go fish and, you know? Because we've added like a little park area with picnic tables. And so just try to make it where it's more usable for people when they're there, that they can enjoy, like you said, the shade. That's number one. We want it to be something that they want to be there. You know, they want to just be able to walk their dogs in the area.
I travel back and forth to Gainesville quite often, and I've noticed over the past several years that it has definitely had an improvement. So I do commend you for that. The road, the curb appeal is better than it was a few years ago.
It was a big undertaking. Was more than what we thought, but we --
Anything that's worth doing is worth doing right, and it's never easy to do, but we appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from the board for the applicant? Anyone in the audience? I do have one speaker card. Sherri Ashby, would you like to come forward and speak?
Sherri Ashby, 127 Southwest 56th. This butts right up to my property. I guess this is going to be a really different speech than it was going to be. My request is that the three lots adjacent to my home were not to be rezoned. My problem with that is if something happens, please understand that the park has come 1,000% better than it was. Please know that. So I have no problem with the park. My problem is if something happens to the owners and it's sold, that those three properties are now under the PUD, and they can move a house or a mobile home less than 25 feet from my property line, which my trailer only sits 10 feet from the property line via statute at the time it was placed there. So we're talking less than 30 feet between where they can put a home or an RV lot in my house. I have young children, a pool. That would present issues if it were to go to a new owner, and it is not consistent with the development plan because it was originally residential. It's been in the plan as residential, and it's been residential for 50 years.
The PUD, as it would be approved, would still be the requirement for any new owner. The PUD goes with the property, not with the owner.
Correct. So that would allow the new owner to do whatever these owners are saying they're going to keep it green and a dog park, but the new owners could make it lot.
We don't know what anybody will do in the future. You're right.
Correct, and it is directly on my property line with small children. And we just got 20 done. We have two U-turns on each side. So now, we're talking more traffic and the bus and that sort of thing.
20 is a little closer to you now.
I don't, you know, I don't oppose the park at all. Like I said, it's come a long way, and Putnam County needs affordable housing. This isn't going to be that.
No, this is temporary.
Less than 90 days, so we don't know who's there, who's coming and going right next to my house.
What buffer is required on this property?
50 feet.
Okay. And what is the buffer that is required? Is it vegetative or an option?
Yes, ma'am. It's a three-to-one use group that are adjacent to one another. If I remember correctly, it's a 20B, which means a 20-foot-wide buffer. But it's not always 20-foot-wide. But there's several different ways that they can satisfy the buffer. Typically, what we see whenever it's a 20B buffer is a privacy fence or contiguous hedges that are six-foot tall and canopy trees every 20, I'm sorry, 20 feet within 10 feet of the property line. But I'd have to refer to the code when we go to DRC.
Right, right. But there will definitely be a buffer that will be wider than just a shrub.
20 feet.
Yeah, it's going to be a deep buffer.
The buffer basically means that there has to be some sort of screening mechanism within 20 feet of that property line. But it can be a contiguous hedge. It can be shrubbery. It can be a privacy fence. It can be trees. It can be a combination of all of that.
It doesn't state what it has to be.
The PUD could specify.
It can be like all kinds of different things. So then, when we switch owners and it's not --
It still has to be there.
But then all they have to do is the 20 feet. I mean, he's saying that we're going to put, I think it's like, what, 150 feet, 200 feet at this point as green space. That's what they're going to do with the park. They're going to make it green space. It's their three separate parcels. They're going to make them green space.
Yeah, yeah. It's on the plan.
Right.
And that will be, that will remain.
Right, and that's going to give a buffer for as long as they own the property.
Well, it's going to be, the buffer's going to be required even if they sell the property because what's in the plan, what's in the PUD agreement, has to be maintained by the new owner.
Even the green space in the dog lot. They can't make those lots later.
They would have to have an amendment to the PUD.
That's correct.
Perfect. Thank you. Have a great day. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
You're very welcome. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak either for or against this particular motion? All right. Bringing it back to the board, closing the public portion of the meeting, bringing it back to the board for discussion.
A move that we recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that we approve PUD 24-00005 as it is consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan.
I'll second.
I have a proper motion and a second. Do I hear any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, I call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All opposed? Very well, we have approved this. This goes before the Board of County Commissioners on July 23, 2024.
I have a question.
You have a question, Mr. Hancock?
Just for you. How does that affect our rates for taxes? Not that it matters, just curious.
That's a question we're going to have to defer to staff.
They don't take that in consideration.
I'll call Clay.
I have another question that I've been, and this is just something hypothetical I want to ask. I'm being told, and I'm just curious if it's true, I don't know if you know, is that the solar farms that are approved are taken off the tax rolls.
I heard that, too.
That's a good question. I don't, I mean, I don't --
I would be very interested to know that.
I don't heavily deal with solar farms.
They all score over the deal.
Yep. I shouldn't probably need to know that because that would reflect --
I think they pay a little bit. It's not a lot, but they do pay. They do pay.
I remember it going from green belt to commercial that FPL would pay more taxes than have been paid on the farmland.
Yes. Because I had a chance to put a solar farm in.
Yes.
I inquired about it, and that was the thing. I would, the way this one was set up, I would still own the property. It would go to commercial, and I'd have to pay the taxes, but FPL would pay the taxes on that property to me that would be in my rent of the land.
Right.
It goes up a little bit. It goes up.
I think that deal has grown sound.
That's correct.
Oh, does the legislature play with that? I think do that, and I hate it when they do things like that.
It would affect my votes in the future.
Well, you know, I was thinking we were getting extra taxes.
I can't do that.
Do you gentlemen have any insight on that? You do? What is it, Zach? Tell us. There you go.
State statute actually preempt solar facilities for the distribution, the creation, distribution, and some other adjective of power or public utility. They're preempted by state. So solar facilities only have to go through DEP to get a resource permit. They're exempt from zoning. They're exempt from DRC. They're exempt from building permits. So that's, but as far as taxes go, I don't know if they're exempt from those. You'd have to contact Clay Davis with Putnam County Property Appraiser.
I will, I'll ask.
That would be a good question for you to find out the answer to, Mr. Hancock, and bring back to us.
I'll try to do that.
All right. Is there any old business that needs to come before the board? Sit down, Stanley. We're not through. I'm sorry. I know. I know, we all are angry. Is there any new business that needs to come before the board? Mr. Hancock's going to check on that issue with the taxes for solar farms. We have the minutes from the May 15 meeting in our packet. Are there any amendments to the minutes?
I do have one. I wasn't here, and it says that I made a motion to approve something.
I pointed that out to Erin. Yeah. That's okay.
How'd you do that?
That was telepathic.
It's amazing what you can do sometimes.
Wait, did you go back and check the tape? Okay.
I made the motion to approve the minutes of May 15 with the change that Erin was not here.
Yes. All right, second somebody. Okay. All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. No opposed. At that point, it is 6:08 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you again.